All right, I'll call to order the Franklin Regional School Board of Directors Committee of the whole meeting for Monday, March 25th, 2024. Ms. Wolf, roll call, please.
Mr. Azalina.
Here.
Mrs. Bachera.
Here.
Mr. Fallett?
I am here.
Mr. Kozlowski?
Here.
Mr. Weinman?
Here.
Mr. Zebra?
Here.
Mr. Crimsky?
Here.
There you go. Mr. Yingling and Dr. Eshwin Rayburn.
We met in executive session from 6:35 to 7:30 for legal and contractual obligations. And before I turn it over, I'd like to actually turn it over to superintendent, so we're going to ask for a moment of silence here for a passing of one of our teachers. But I'd like, superintendent, to allow him to say a few words before we do that. So, last week, we lost one of our young, bright stars, a first-grade teacher at Franklin Regional Primary School, is Maddie Clark. And obviously, that was a huge blow to the school community there and us as a whole. Maddie Clark loved her children deeply. She worked arduously, relentlessly, to make sure they got what they needed to be successful in the classroom and beyond. I think Lauren Rybert, one of the communications with her mom, her mom said it best. Obviously, Maddie's passion, her commitment, was incredible. But her mom talked about how she came home every day and talked about her kids and their wins, the big wins and the small wins. And she celebrated that every day. And when you think about people like Maddie, it gives you hope for the future and really hope and faith in public education as a whole. I think what struck me most was the statement, the last statement, was her mom wanted us to tell her children, the children she had in class, how much she loved them. And so, a lot of times, you come into these types of settings, and it's the politics, it's the operations of a school system, and it's the things that happen in a classroom, the heart of the educators, and the bonds that are built between the educators and the children, that endure above and beyond any of the other pieces. And it reminds us about what's important. And I know, as a parent of a soon-to-be-two-twenty-somethings, time goes fast, and you watch them grow and develop and evolve, and who they become as people when they're adults. A lot of times, you look back to who they were as kids and who supported them, both in your home as well as outside of your home. And you have this intense amount of pride and love for who your kids become and what they do. And I would tell you Maddie Clark's folks, her mom and dad and her family, should be exceptionally proud of who she was and how she served the kids that were in her classroom. And so, I just want to give a little statement about who Maddie Clark was. And so... And with that, if we could just bow our heads and take a moment of silence in honor of Maddie Clark. Thank you. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, Dr. Piranha, for the superintendent's report. And so, we have a, it is a long superintendent's report. And that's okay, because some of the things we're talking about are pretty amazing. I want to make sure I follow the order. I know it's in my bag. Oh, there we go. So, we're going to start off first and foremost, our FR Middle School, talking about the aqueduct STEM projects. And with us, we have Mr. Tressler, I also, and students, and I also see Mr. Vanderwater here as well. And if I'm missing anyone else, I apologize. So, I'm going to turn it, is someone introducing you, or are you just ready to go? All right, awesome.
Dawn. Dawn.
Thank you for allowing us the time to come and share our project with you. It's great seeing a lot of you. I feel old now that I've had so many of your kids in class. I think that's like a mark of telling you that you are old now as a teacher. But thank you again for allowing us to come here. Myself, along with Mr. Vanderwater, who is a first-year teacher here, along with Mr. Brandon Agonad, who is unable to be here tonight, we wanted to tell you a little bit about the origins of this project, and then we want to turn it over to the students to demonstrate what they actually did with the project. Seventh grade social studies is an ancient Civ class that takes us from the time of Mesopotamians up through the age of exploration, where our eighth-grade curriculum picks up. We strive every year to incorporate PBL, project-based learning, into what we're doing. That way, our students are seeing relevancy, making real-world connections. And so, coming off of the National History Day project, which is a culminating massive research project, which is about three months of research that these kids undertake, we had kids come to us and say, you know, can we do something a little more hands-off? You know, NHD is really intense. It's really difficult. It's strenuous. Can we do something that's hands-on? And so, Mr. Vanderwater and I, and Mr. Agonad, we kind of came together, and we said, yeah, you know, we're talking about the Romans. Why can't we come up with something that's unique, that's creative, that's hands-on, that is STEM-based? We should be doing this more often in our class. And it was probably within, what, a 42-minute class period, Mr. Vanderwater and I sat down during sixth period, and we came up with this idea that if we're talking about architecture in Rome, why not have the kids actually build and demonstrate their design for a Roman aqueduct? And so, we started by looking at the history of Roman aqueducts. What was the purpose behind them? How many were there? How far could they run the water? All of the ins and outs of a Roman aqueduct. And then, we introduced the kids to the project and said, here's kind of what we're after. And we'd never done this before. So, we spent a lot of time just going over, here's kind of what you can do with this. But we wanted the kids to be creative with this and come up with their own ideas and come up with their own designs, and fail, and see that it's okay to fail, and overcome, and achieve together, and collaborate. And they did a remarkable job for us giving so little instruction on what to do. Again, we had never done this project before, and I think in its entirety, we took about two days to put it together, and then threw it in the kids' lap and said, go. And so, we wanted to turn it over to the kids to allow them to show you what they came up with and how they took our basic idea and made it so much better than even what we could have imagined.
Yeah, so, one of the focuses that we had with this was the five Cs, and we think that we hit all of them pretty well. And I know that some of them, with their projects, they came up with some really unique ideas. We saw plastic bottles. We saw aluminum foil. We saw PVC pipes. And they had to, well, they'll explain here a little bit about the ins and outs of the project. So, we're going to do a little demonstration, if that's okay.
So, we asked some of our students to bring in some of their projects and some of their design. We asked a group from each one of our classes to come in, because either they worked really, really well together, they came up with a unique design. You should have seen the mess in our rooms as we were doing this, but it's okay. We overcame that. So, yeah, we will turn it over to you guys, and you can share what you came up with.
So, we used PVC pipes to create our aqueduct. We have three points, point A, B, and C, and the goal was to get the duck to point A to C.
So, basically, the whole thing... All right, thank you. So, basically, the whole project was to just try to get the aqueduct, the duck, to point A to point C, and also to get the water through those two pipes too, but also.
Water is supposed to go out of all of the pipes without the duck getting stuck or going through these two pipes. These two pipes there. And we poked holes inside here, so...
Right there, Hannah.
So, that we, sorry.
Okay. Oh, yeah. So, that's kind of like a hardship we faced with it, is we put duct tape on these sides to try to prevent the duck from going in there, but we noticed the water wasn't going through it. So, we actually took like a ruler and a pencil, taped them together, tried to put holes through the duct tape, so that way, the water can get through all of the points and still the duck not going through those.
Just to give you a little bit of context, when you hear them talk about the ducks, something that Mr. Vanderwater and I came up with when we were having them create their aqueducts was, it's about transferring water, right? Using gravity to move water and displace water into different parts of Rome. We thought we'd add an extra challenge, and we bought little rubber duckies about yay big. And the second objective was to move, well, the first objective was to move water to all of the different points, simulating how the Romans would move it throughout their city. But then, they had to move an actual rubber duck to a specific point, so they would have to maybe design a lever and design some kind of contraption or some way to get an actual rubber duck, aqueduct, to a different part of their project. So, that is what they mean by that. The second group is three of my students that I asked to come up and share. So, do you guys want to come on up? I proposed to my students a little bit of a Q&amp;A kind of session with them, and so, I'll allow them to talk. And I'll start by kind of addressing the first question, which is, will you guys share kind of how you work together in the collaborative process for the three, there was a fourth student, but for the four of you, how you guys all work together?
During this project, we worked together by using collabor...
We use...
We use collaboration and communication when designing, constructing, and brainstorming this project. And we all participated in bringing materials to help construct it. And we had to pick our partners, which helped with the communication part, so it wasn't like awkward or anything.
Next question would be, what was the biggest obstacle that your team had to overcome or the biggest obstacle that you guys faced?
We had a lot of obstacles during this project. One of them was trying to get the intersections to work, because we thought taking a turn like this and drilling it through would get the duck and water through, but it actually didn't work, because it was too flimsy, and it was like going to break very soon. So, we had to look for a different type of pipe to connect, and we found two, and we connected them together. And another one was the angle for the duck to go through. And we had to put the water through a different angle, because it wasn't going through one of the Bs to get to C. And we didn't know how to go to a C, so we had to cut another turn off right here, so it could enter the C over here.
Spoken like a true Roman. It didn't go perfect the first time. All right. And lastly, what was your favorite part of the project? What did you guys like most about it?
The favorite part of the project that I could say is that it was very hands-on. And while it was hands-on, we got to learn more about Romans and how they use this in their everyday life. We also got to use communication and collaboration throughout this project and helped us to learn more, just in general.
Thank you guys so much. Appreciate it. If you guys don't mind, I believe that we have a slideshow that I would like to run through really quick and show you some of the other projects that we came up with. As you can see, a lot of these projects are made out of PVC pipe. They last a little bit better when you dump a bunch of water on them than cardboard does. So, the ones that were made out of cardboard and paper, although effective, didn't withstand the test of time. All right, so you can see here, we had a bunch of different stations. All three of our classrooms actually met in a library, which is a large collaborative space. We had the groups come together. They each kind of had their own pod, their own section. And as you can see here, what I would like for you to look at is the different material that they're using. The young man on the right, you can see that he brought in tracks from his Matchbox cars. On the left, you can see some PVC piping. You can see a ridiculous amount of duct tape that it took to tape everything and make sure that you didn't have leaks all over the place, because they realized that was an obstacle. These young men actually, they created a different design. It was not a true traditional, just a gravitational pull aqueduct. They actually had different pieces, and they simulated a water slide. The idea for these gentlemen came from, one of them went to, I believe it was Splash Lagoon or Great Wolf Lodge, and they saw this project as being similar to going down a water slide, which I thought was really ingenious, actually. I thought it was really smart to think of an aqueduct that way. And it's kind of hard to see from the image here, but they had one coming down this way, and then it would hit on an angle and come down this way, so their duck was bouncing all through different points, which actually simulated the sewage system that they had in ancient Rome, and the kids didn't even know they were really designing that. So, pretty smart. Again, you can see some of the students here, they had a ton of boxes. This was one of the groups that, when they dumped a bunch of water on, they realized they had leaks everywhere, and it did not withstand time. But nonetheless, still successful. Scissors were an obstacle. They were difficult with seventh graders, making sure that they did not get too injured. But again, you can see here, kids working together, creating slopes for their aqueduct. We then took the kids, we gave them a bunch of days to brainstorm, put their projects together. We gave them two days outside, where we went and had a pool, and they could actually test their aqueducts. It was one day to kind of test it, see where your flaws were, see where your holes were. And that was actually kind of where you saw the learning actually happen. There was a design process, which came from their brainstorming. But then, when you saw the kids fail here, that's when you saw the wheels start to turn, and everything started to click and come together. Well, how do we solve that problem? There's a leak here. What do we need to do here? This doesn't give us enough water pressure. Where do we need to like make this mistake or need to make this correction? This was one of the best parts. Mr. Vanderwater stood out here and used his military background as a way to kind of guide them through, here's how you should be thinking through this process. And he did a wonderful job guiding them. You can see some kids got extremely elaborate. Again, Mr. Vanderwater, with his kids, I believe, put a three-foot limit on his as well, so he had some extremely long aqueducts. There, you can see the little duck. There's the star of the show, the little rubber ducks that they had to move. And again, you can see more of the students out there with some of their materials. There's a much shorter aqueduct. You can see the old milk container, milk carton, yeah, used as their, we talked about reservoirs. We talked about other parts of Roman architecture as well. So, that was used as their reservoir, which we talked about them with. There we go. There you can see some of the longer ones as well. I think there should be one more video. There's the, here we go.
Hey, watch your step. It's muddy over there.
It's going, it's going, and you need more water.
Watch, it's gonna go. He's gonna go.
There you go. Aaron knows what he's doing.
See, it hit one side, and then there, it went down the middle. I was really, really proud of that group. So, again, that was our aqueduct project. I said, I was really proud of not only the collaboration, the critical thinking, all of the Cs that came together in this project that we kind of threw together last minute. It was really rewarding to see what the kids were able to come up with, so we were really proud of them. Thank you guys for your time.
There's a perfect example of our five Cs in action, and I think, I don't need to say a word, because our kids did a fantastic job of talking about those Cs and talking about how they applied to what they're doing. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Gillen, who's going to talk about the Unified Club and the open-mic night.
Good evening. We have two young ladies from Franklin Regional Senior High with us this evening, and if Elena Ottley and Savannah Lawrence could join me. They are two members and officers of the Unified Club at the high school. They'd like to tell you a little bit about the club, a little bit about how the open-mic came to be, and some of the efforts that they put in at the high school as connected to inclusionary practice and the joining of all at our high school.
So, I'm Savannah Lawrence. And I'm Elena Ottley. And so, we're a part of the Unified Club at Franklin Regional High School. And the Unified Club at the high school, we really stand for inclusivity and making sure all students feel welcome, no matter if you have disability or if you don't. We do a lot of events at the high school, including the Polar Plunge, which we've done for the past few years, and it's really fun, which raises money. And we jump in, like down at Hines, we jump in the AcroSure Stadium. And we also, both are a part of Unified Track and Unified Bocce. And just for the first time, this, two weeks ago, we put together an event called Band Together, which was an open-mic night. Mrs. Nath, she was a parent here. She has children who were at the school. And they, it's, an open-mic night is for, it's autism-friendly event, and we had like food. It was all, it was free for anyone to come. So, we invited all different school districts and anyone from our school. Parents were welcome to come. Everyone came, and it was really nice. There was a lot of people there, and Elena's gonna talk to you about that event.
Okay, so, the first Franklin Regional Band Together was a great experience for everyone. Spreading inclusion amongst individuals with special disabilities and without is very important. The Band Together was something a little different, but more importantly, fun for everyone. We all sang, we all danced, and we were able to have the kids show their abilities with instruments and show their passion and love for music. With that being said, we hope this event can be a yearly celebration at Franklin Regional and to give those on the autism spectrum a special night to remember. Thank you.
We do have a short video to show you. We didn't think that just talking about it really did the event justice, so if we could bring up that video, please.
While they're trying to pull the video up, I just wanted to present them a certificate of accomplishment from our high school for endeavors in inclusion, citizenship, and excellence. So, Elena, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Savannah? Thank you.
So, we might find it later. We may come back to it. Hold on. First of all, I want to thank the two of you for your efforts as well, because that inclusivity is so important, is making all kids feel welcome. But really, what I, here's the big thing about the Unified Club that I see, the relationships that develop between students with disabilities and their peers really are true friendships and true relationships, and that caring, that we want to be part of our culture, exists. And that wouldn't happen. We could want all of that, but that would not happen without the students taking leadership roles like you did. So, thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Smith, Ms. Audrey Meehan, Ms. Megan Malucci, and Ms. Megan Belcik, to talk about, provide a major update on MTSS.
Thank you, and good evening. Those are two hard acts to follow, so, but we'll do our best. You know, over the last 18 months, we started, Franklin Regional started implementing MTSS framework, really K to 12. And it's amazing to see how it's grown over the last 18 months to really support all students in academics, behaviors, and everything under that umbrella. So, and none of this work could be done without the three next to me, so I don't want to take too much time. I know a little bit of a limitation here. So, I will start out at the primary with Audrey Meehan.
I'm shorter than him. I'm Audrey Meehan at the primary school, and this has really come full circle.
see with the demographic of students that are at and above benchmark, you do want to continue to expose them to higher-level text to increase their ability to read and the levels at which they are reading at. And then we have students, we have several students who grew from being below or well below benchmark as well from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year. And with that as well, we do have some students who might have remained below benchmark. But one thing we do take into account is their rate of improvement. So while they might not have hit benchmark at the middle of the year, we do look to see, are they at or above typical growth, or is there a need for intensification at a certain area? So this is our middle-of-the-year benchmark. And another thing I wanted to touch on, too, is that our reading team, we have three reading specialists, have been working with each grade level. And they've offered community parent nights at each grade level to allow parents of all students in that grade level to come in, learn a little bit more about the science of reading and specific phonics skills that we are hitting on during our foundational ELA block. So that's our primary update.
Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Megan Malucci, a proud FR grad. And I've been teaching over three decades in the FR school district. So it is really a distinct honor and a pleasure to speak to you about the mid-year progress being made at the Intermediate Building with MTSS. Before I review the mid-year data, I wanted to just articulate that this program was built from the ground up. It didn't exist 18 months ago. With the support of Dr. Robert Buffon, our principal at the Intermediate, and our SBC St. Vincent College graduate fellow, Elise DeBrow, we developed a system for growth and sustainable change, which we found was needed after COVID. The framework was created using research-based practices and partnering with the best in the nation. We're so proud of the success of our grades three through five students and what they're accomplishing in just a year and a half. Within the Intermediate Building itself, we've seen dramatic shifts in conversations about the data and individual learning. And this happens during our professional learning communities, which happens every single day of the week. This communication has allowed us to create a bridge for sustainable success for all of our students. So making an impact as well as sustainable success are really the goals of our program. So this first slide demonstrates our progression. This is how we formulate our groups. This is what we do. This is the model. And this happens consistently. Renaissance, which is STAR, if you're familiar with the STAR program, this is the Renaissance model. And it's our model as well. And I've partnered with STAR and Renaissance. And I speak to them on a weekly basis. And we talk about progressions just like this. And they endorse the fact that what we're doing is based on solid practices. So STAR is the universal screener. Once we screen the students, building-wide, in reading and in math, we determine which students may be at risk. There may be tier-three risks that are intensive interventions. Tier-two would be interventions that can happen at the classroom level, but no more than five students per class, because that's enough for a teacher to work with. And then tier-one, which is your general basic foundation that all students receive. So once we complete the screener, we go through the data, and we go through a skill diagnostic. We're looking at foundational planks. I'm not looking at a composite score, an overall scaled score. That's too lofty. I have to bring it in. So what I do is, I look at the foundational planks in reading. Maybe it's decoding and fluency. In math, it's general operations: addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division. And with that, some operations that might involve some problem solving. We intensify that particular strand in those two areas, and then the interventions begin. The teachers receive a list. These are the tier-three kids. The interventionists, Mr. DeBrow and myself, we work with the tier-three students. Tier-two, again, is done in the classroom, but it's not done without support. So if I say, you have these five students that need individualized attention, I will provide for you all of the materials that you need. You have enough to do. I will provide those materials and the professional development that goes along with it. So at the beginning of the year, I talked about the work that we were doing with Math Stackers, the three MTSS interventions. We wrote a grant. We got the Math Stackers. It was amazing, because with the Math Stackers, we saw huge changes in our students' ability to manipulate numbers in a way they never had before. So it wasn't rote. It wasn't drill. It was application. This is all based on a series of 10. 10 ones are the same size as the 10. Two fives, same as the 10. Create add-end pairs that equal 10. The kids started to get very comfortable with it. And with that, we were really excited. And we were seeing so much growth and change. And then for reading, I would provide, this would be an example of a file folder that I'd create for the teachers, for all the reading materials that they would need for partner reading. So those are the materials that are the professional development that go behind the scenes, because I want it done with fidelity. I want it done in a consistent way. If it's not consistent, then we may have gaps that still exist. So we make sure it's consistent. So then moving from there, we look at then the data, the progress monitoring. Our tier-three students, the most intensive needs, receive progress monitoring testing through STAR once a week. And I analyze that data every single week. And that data is then communicated to our teachers. Here's how they've grown in the last week. Or if they haven't grown, we, you know, make notes about what's going on and why they might not have grown that week. And our tier-two kids are progress monitored every other week. And again, the teachers receive that data, and the teachers know how their students are doing that are working with them in those small groups in the classroom. Our ultimate goal, once we evaluate that on weekly basis, or if it's tier-two every other week, is to have everybody back at tier-one. Right? That's the ultimate goal. That 170 is something I'm so incredibly proud of. 170 of our students at the Intermediate Building have actually moved from one level to another, tier-two or to tier-three. They've moved from three to two, or two back to one. But no one has returned. So if they exited three, they went to two. Nobody came back to three. If they exited two, they went to one. Nobody came back to two. We're holding on to that. We don't want to lose that. And again, when you talk about Maddie and the success in celebrating the wins, that's what we celebrate. Those are wins. So I think about, you know, that whole concept of celebrating the win, and it just resonates right there. So in our next slide, Dr. Del, this is just a heat map. And I wanted to just show, this is an actual data map from what I was working with from the beginning of the year to, I think it's the 8th of March, with the data not there. Like, you can't see the quantitative, but you can kind of like, it's qualitative now. When you look at this, this is the exact, I just took the numbers out. But I wanted you to see, because when you look at core instruction, that's your tier-one, that's your green. Yellow is your targeted instruction, that's your tier-two. And then your tier-three is that intensive support. So you can see at the beginning of the year, and this is just, you know, a snipping tool shot of this, but you can see at the beginning of the year, the red, right? And then as they were tested every single week, this is tier-three, you can see there's some fluctuation. Maybe they stayed red, maybe there was a little yellow, maybe there's some green. But as you see, as they progressed, it was all green. This is the goal. And this is just from one grade level, and I just snipped it, and I put it in, because you can get a visual sense then. This is a very powerful tool, without ever seeing a number, of what you want to see. This is the goal of MTSS. But with that being said, how do we sustain them? How do we make sure that we didn't exit them too soon? We use real data to do that. So we have to see three sustainable scores at 70% or above. And that has to be consecutive. You can't have a score, you know, a couple weeks before, and then we say, oh, we'll include that. No, it's three in a row. Three in a row, you can go. And when they go, it's incredible, because you're proud of them, and they're proud of themselves. But then there's also that other end of it where they're like, oh, I don't get to come back? And no, you don't. And I don't want them to come back, because I want them to own it, that they earned that, right? So when you look at our data, this is where we started at the beginning of the year for reading. 73.4% of our students were at a point where they were really at benchmark, where we wanted them. 73.4. At mid-year, 81%. But in addition to that, what I also want you to notice about that data is that if you look at the areas that aren't at the benchmark, from the mid-year and then the beginning of the year, the mid-year data is decreasing in all three of those areas. And again, that's what we want. We really want that intensive to be invisible. We don't even want to see it, right? But you can see that each of those particular bars are decreasing in terms of those that are not at benchmark. So we're happy about that. And then with the next slide, that would be our math slide, we have 82.4% were at the benchmark beginning of the year, and now 88%. But again, you can see those other bars are decreasing. And this data is all directly from STAR, pulled directly from STAR. The last piece I just wanted to mention, because I'm just so proud of the growth that we are seeing. To me, it is remarkable in such a short period of time. I feel we have a really incredible program, a program that is showing success and sustaining success. So the last slide that I have is our fifth graders. When they were in third grade, we didn't have an MTSS program. In fourth grade, it was our first year of MTSS, and now fifth graders. And what I found interesting about this data was that in each year, we have more students that are increasing to the at-or-above level of meeting that benchmark, and then a decrease every year of the students that are below the level. So again, that's powerful testimony to the program. And what we want is that sustainable growth. And if we have that, we have everything. But again, it's only because we've partnered with the best in the nation that we know the rules. We know how to make it happen. And it's happening for our kids, and we're so proud of them. So thank you.
Can we go back to that slide real quick? I think it's also important to note, if you study national trends in terms of data, as students move from third to fourth to fifth, you actually typically see a significant decline in the number of students meeting the benchmark. That's not, I mean, so you're seeing a positive trend line in a situation where that trend line is usually going down, even in good situations. So I think it's important to note that as well.
I have a question for you. I hope I can articulate this correctly. But so when you move a child from benchmark, say they're in tier-three, and math might be the easiest thing to ask us about. So say the child is in tier-three when we're working on simple fractions, okay? How, can you explain for the parents and stuff, how you keep a child engaged in the class, but make sure they don't maybe lose that particular thing? Because the class will move on from maybe simple fractions to simple, you know, reducing them down to simple numbers, then moving on to something else. How does the child work on what they initially got in the intervention for, and still progress and move with the class while they're continuing on with things as well?
So it's an interesting question. And I will say that the students still receive tier-one instruction in the regular classroom. What they work with me on are the more foundational skills. But I will say that the foundational skills do lead them to success with the application of that. So if we're working on a foundation in terms of, let's say, we're doing addition of fractions, because it's a foundational skill, they can apply that into their classroom. And although the classroom may go higher level with that, they should have that foundation so that they're able to apply what they have done. And we're seeing that kind of success, too, where students that previously may have had gaps in that kind of instruction and weren't able to meet the goals are now able to meet the goals, because it's almost like a double dose. You get foundation with us, and it's up to three days a week now, up to 25 minutes a day, plus your math instruction. So those work hand-in-hand together. So foundationally, it's really everything. Because if they don't have the foundation, they can't apply. So our goal is to give them that foundation so they can apply it. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, it does. And then, so for parents that are maybe worried, oh, if I go into tier-two or tier-three, my child will fall behind, and the rest of the class, they're still getting that exposure as well. When you do your STAR assessment, are you doing the STAR on the areas that you're specifically working on, or is it based on the class, where the class is at as well?
STAR is interesting, because it meets the children where they are. So if they're in third grade, they will have third-grade standards on their assessment. But if, while they're taking that test, after three questions, STAR will reevaluate where the child is. Because if those three questions are all missed, it takes it down. So it meets them where they are. And then I, again, just work with that foundational plank, which is the most foundational piece of the entire process. There's nothing more beyond that that they would be looking at than that foundational piece. But STAR itself will meet them where they are. So when a student is taking a test, we don't want them to have frustration, but they will have what they call step questions, where they'll try something a little more challenging. If they don't make that mark, it won't even count, and they'll go back to that grade level that they are in. But again, I don't look at the composite. I'm just looking at the foundational planks, in both reading and in math, to ensure that that's the skill that we're filling. Because once we have that, what we've found is, then the kids are able to grow in every other area. Sure, thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question. How do you define the benchmarks that you're judging by to move someone into the green? So is it based upon a grade? Is it based upon a tested competency? Like, the kids that are in the green, say, an A student understands the concept fully, can demonstrate it, and apply, move, moving forward, excuse me. The child that's in tier-three or tier-two that moves to tier-one, are you saying they're at equivalent level, or is there a minimum they need to be at? What's that benchmark value look like?
It's 70%. So we have to see 70% three weeks in a row. And for a tier-two kid, it would take six weeks to get there, because they're only tested every other week. But it has to be 70%, three consecutive test sessions. That shows sustainability. And 70% is what STAR says shows that they are at the point that they are grade level. So for some, you know, at the beginning of the year, you could be in a red that's a 10% in foundational planks out of 100%. But we have students that are growing between 20 to 60-plus percent in a year. We're seeing it happen. So the intensive interventions do work, because they're getting what they need. But they're also, I think, feeling success. And for some of them, maybe for the first time, you know, that they have success in math, or they have success in reading. And so success breeds success. And then they believe in themselves. And believe me, we make sure they believe in themselves. You know, our teachers work so hard to make sure our kids believe in themselves. plank, which is the most foundational piece of the entire process. There's nothing more beyond that, that they would be looking at than that foundational piece, but STAR itself will meet them where they are. So, when a student is taking a test, we don't want them to have frustration, but they will have what they call step questions, where they'll try something a little more challenging. If they don't make that mark, it won't even count, and they'll go back to that grade level that they are in. But again, I don't look at the composite, I'm just looking at the foundational planks in both reading and in math, to ensure that that's the skill that we're filling. Because once we have that, what we've found is, then the kids are able to grow in every other area. Sure, thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question. How do you define the benchmarks that you're judging by to move someone into the green? So is it based upon a grade? Is it based upon a tested competency? Like, the kids that are in the green, say, an A student understands the concept fully, can demonstrate it and apply, move, moving forward, excuse me. The child that's in Tier Three or Tier Two that moves to Tier One, are you saying they're at equivalent level, or is there a minimum they need to be at? What's that benchmark value look like?
It's 70%. So we have to see 70% three weeks in a row. And for a Tier Two kid, it would take six weeks to get there, because they're only tested every other week. But it has to be 70%, three consecutive test sessions. That shows sustainability, and 70% is what STAR says shows that they are at the point that they are grade level. So, for some, you know, at the beginning of the year, you could be in a red that's a 10% in foundational planks, out of 100%. But we have students that are growing between 20 to 60-plus percent in a year. We're seeing it happen. So, the intensive interventions do work, because they're getting what they need, but they're also, I think, feeling success. And for some of them, maybe for the first time, you know, that they have success in math, or they have success in reading. And so, success breeds success, and then they believe in themselves. And believe me, we make sure they believe in themselves. You know, our teachers work so hard to make sure our kids believe in themselves, and then, when you come up to the MTSS room, there's bells, and there's whistles, and there's great success for all of these kids, because we want to make sure that they know that they can own this, and they can do it. So, that's, that's the mark. The quantitative mark is 70.
And that's 70% on a test?
It's, yes. It's on that STAR progress monitoring test, and it's that foundational piece that I'm looking at.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Any other questions? Thank you. Megan Belsek is next.
Hello, everyone. I'm Megan Belsek from the middle school. And like Mrs. Malucci was explaining, the STAR, we utilize the same sort of concept at the middle school with a fall, winter, and spring benchmark, and then we utilize that data to tier our students and provide interventions. We do, we are in a unique situation, though, at the middle school, so it is our second year implementing MTSS, but it's also our second year implementing PBIS, which is Positive Behavior Intervention System. And implementing those two systems at one time has changed the way we collaborate as a building. So our PLCs with Dr. Santa Mont and Ms. Berg, we're looking at more data than ever before. And that data is not only academic, but it's behavioral as well. And so, it really allows us to look at the whole child, because if we're not connecting with them emotionally and behaviorally, we can't connect with them academically. And the data truly is speaking for itself. I have a slide somewhere. It's the next one. So, all three grade levels have shown an increase of an average of 11 points in both reading and math from fall to winter in their benchmarks, and, which is very, very significant. From this data, I wanted to highlight our math and writing labs. And this is a Tier Two intervention that we have at the middle school that I could talk to all of you all night about. It is, has been amazing to be a part of, and you can move on to the next slide. I won't read to you these data points, but it truly speaks for itself. So, and it's not rocket science when I explain it, it actually sounds very, very simple. It's providing students with more time just to dig deeper into math and writing. And when we give them that time and truly just put learning first, we're not talking about specific, well, we are talking about specific concepts, but it's more, it's a bigger picture than that. It's creating critical thinkers, it's creating students that have the confidence to attack any, any problem. And that's what we're seeing with these students, when we're giving them time in the math labs. And their data, again, I won't read it to you, but their data speaks for themselves, for itself. And it has been wonderful. I think the biggest thing, the change that I've seen is their confidence. So many middle schoolers lack confidence in so many things, but math and writing would probably be, you know, one of the top two. And the fact that we're giving them time to just discuss these subjects has truly been what some of them have needed. So it's been great to be a part of. It's been very exciting to implement both MTSS and PBIS simultaneously within the building. It truly is changing our culture, and it's very exciting.
I just want to, last thing that I'm going to talk about, and I'll be very brief. I just want to recognize our winter athletes. We had a phenomenal winter season. I mean, I can go down through them, our hockey team shocked Greater Latrobe in the quarterfinals, made it to the semifinals of the WPIHL. Our wrestling team finished third in WPIL, went into Hershey, and finished in the top eight in Pennsylvania, which is arguably the toughest state in the, in the union, when it comes to the great sport of wrestling. Swimming, had a number of kids go on to the state tournament to compete individually and in relays, with one of our student athletes, Holden Thomas, finishing second in the state. And finally, we've all heard about our basketball team, finishing runner-up in WPIL, avenging that loss to Moon, and moving on to play Imahop Charter out of Philadelphia. I know I'm mispronouncing that, don't know much about basketball, but I know that they're good. But, we played them in the finals at Hershey last week, and they battled with the top 21, the 21st ranked team in the nation. Very proud of the athletic performance of all of our student athletes, and really, when we talk about those three As, arts, academics, athletics, as well as citizenship, all are critical, but wanted to recognize our athletes as well.
Dr. P, I would like to just add to that, too. The Unified Bachi team made it to the regionals as well.
They did, yeah, so. That concludes the superintendent's report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Pirino. We will now move on to public comments. First, Diana Alterian.
I wanted to talk about the Learning 2025 initiative that I understand Franklin Regional is a part of. I went to a political event last Monday night, and I heard a speaker talk about this, so I did some investigating of what it is. And I understand there's 120 schools nationwide that are a part of this initiative, and that our school district itself is part of 34 in the Western Pennsylvania's area that we are in a partnership with, that we are doing this initiative with these other 34 schools. So here is what the vision is from AASA from April of 2025. It's a national, this is a vision of public schools, a report from the Learning 2025, it's a National Commission of Students-Centered Equity-Focused Education. The, the vision is on culture, the entire system must attend to the social, emotional, cognitive, mental health, and trauma-based needs of all learners. Interesting that that's the first thing, and it's not anything about educating the child. Social emotion, emotional and cognitive growth, and it just goes on. I mean, you can go through and read this, I'm not going to stand here and read the whole thing to you. Most of it is about shifting the way that we educate our students to more of a non-grade, you know, you don't get an ABC, you're not going to necessarily be in the same class with your peers. They want to do, from what I'm reading, they want to do away with the class the way we know it, that everything will be funneled through the school. The children will know their emotional and social learning through the schools, the resources will come through the schools, is what I was reading through this. So my question is, are we a part of this? What is our involvement in this initiative? Are we dumbing down our students? One of the things, how they're going to pigeonhole our students into the five different curriculum types, I guess you could call them, is they will be taking a RIASEC test, which is a test to pigeon you into what your strengths are, your realistic investigative, artistic, social, enterprising, conventional. So you're going to take this test, and this is where they're going to gear your education to. So I could be one of these today, and next week, I might change my mind and be something totally different, but you've already got me going to this one pathway. So, again, my question is, are we doing this? How are we doing it? Do the parents know that we're doing this? Are they opting in, opting out? How has this been communicated? I did see an article a while ago in the Panther poll, but it didn't really give what this really is. There's not a whole lot of transparency on the background of this. So somewhere along the line, there's lack of information being communicated. I don't think that it's necessarily being pushed to the students in the correct way. There's been petitions about it. And one of the things also is, the recommendation is for a holistic redesign, and that's from the AASA. And what is the holistic redesign is capturing a new vision of future-focused, rigorous, energetic, and culturally vibrant learning through the improvement of districts to enact change on behalf of learners, families, and communities.
Diana, that's your four minutes.
Okay, thank you.
I actually can talk a lot about this, and I'm... I can talk a lot about this, and I'm actually very happy to. If we look at education, when I went to school in the 1990s, it was kids in a row, teacher was the conveyor of knowledge, would basically tell kids what they needed to know, stuff that we could Google, and that was essentially what our assessments looked like. And really, what we're looking at is looking to be more future-focused in terms of engaging kids in activities like you saw this evening, that obviously, from a reading standpoint and a mathematics standpoint, we're still teaching the basics and the basic skills so that kids can get onto higher-order thinking skills and more critical thinking. And so that our kids are engaged in learning and real-world problem-solving, that prepares them for their future, not our present or our past. And so, really, it's engaging kids. And so when you look at RIASEC, we have not adopted a RIASEC model, however, RIASEC really contributes to allowing kids career opportunities for career exploration. And, and so, looking at what we're doing here, we have career exploration into various career clusters across, across high-demand occupations, high-demand, high-pay occupations for our region. And so when you take a look at that, what we're doing is, yeah, we are doing career education, and we are doing career exploration. We're helping kids determine where their strengths are, where their interests are, and where their passions are, so that way, when they make career decisions in the future, they're not getting stuck in things that really don't fit their skill set or their interest levels. Or in those areas where they go and they spend $150,000 on an education for something that doesn't really pay to support that. So it's getting kids to make real-world decisions about the things that they're interested in. But when we get them in the classroom, not only are they learning about the material and the information, but they're learning how it applies to the real world. It's engaging kids in project-based learning and problem-based learning, so that education becomes relevant and important to them. I couldn't tell you the last time I used a box and whisker plot in the real world. That's the type of thing that drove our curriculum. We're going to teach you how to do box and whisker plots, and you go and do it on a test. We're giving you things that matter in your life, giving our kids things that matter in their lives, and giving them ownership of their, of their education. Our teachers are still there supporting, we're still setting high standards. All you have to do is look at the number of our students who are walking out of here with multiple college credits, number of students that are going on to some pretty tremendous things, as well as the increase in students that are going to the Career Technology Center. It's giving our students learning opportunities that matter, not stuff where you memorize it for a test, and you forget it 10 minutes afterwards because it doesn't apply. So are we trying to transform learning? Are we trying to be a leader in this area? Are we trying to be innovative? Absolutely. Are we trying to build situations, and the two young ladies left, where our kids learn kindness and compassion? The answer is yes. When you talk about equity, it's not treating everybody equal, it's helping people, meeting people where they are and helping them get to where they can be by removing barriers to success and supporting them along the way. It's not lowering the standards for, for kids, it's helping every kid achieve their true potential. And if that's the accusation, I'm guilty. And I'll continue to do it, because it matters for our kids. It matters for our kids, that they have an education that prepares them for a world that's far different than the one that we were prepared for. And so I guess, am I a little overly passionate about the education of our kids and providing those opportunities? I sure am. Am I passionate about making sure that every kid reaches the benchmark through the MTSS, whether it's academic? I am. Am I passionate about ensuring that our kids develop the C in the five Cs in terms of citizenship? That they care about something bigger than just themselves? I am. And the people that surround me on this administrative team are just as passionate, if not more. And so that's my response to that.
Thank you, Dr. Pirino. Next, Susan Eldren-Fritz.
Good evening, Susan Eldren-Fritz, Murraysville. My question, it has to do with more of a financial. Now with Act Number 52 in place, where the average yearly membership is no longer prorated, my question is, how much more revenue has been and will be secured, and how much of a decrease will the taxpayers see in this constantly increasing budget? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Helen Elliott.
Helen Elliott, 3166 Chestnut Street in Murraysville. I was, wanted to bring up MindUp, I was wondering if we could get an update as to what's happening with that. We're supposed to take a, it's going to take a year to figure out what we're going to be involved, how we're going to be involved in that, and then how it's going to be implemented. So I was kind of wondering where we were. Have the committees started meeting yet? Or one committee, is it one committee, is it several committees? I know I volunteered to be on a committee, I haven't heard anything positive on that request. So I wanted to report as to where we are in that. And I know that the Graeble Foundation is willing to sponsor the program, but I was wondering, I know Jen must be involving time in this, so that is work hours, so is that money being tracked, the amount of money that it's taking to get this organized and flowing? So, just wanted to know what the fiscal situation is on MindUp at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you get that addressed?
Yeah, I'll address that. As far as the MindUp, actually, it'll, we'll have a whole rollout at the next board meeting in April, with all timelines and updates of the process and costs, so that you'll have all your answers on the fiscal aspect of it, as well as the different phases that we're going to go through, and how that whole program would look in stages. It's not going to be an entire program, because it's going to take years to implement that, and we're going to actually look at each individual, each individual phase, and then not be voted on from a board standpoint, as opposed to rolling out an entire program that will also still be involved with the community, with teachers, and everything else. So, if you come back to the next board meeting, that will be on the agenda and discussed.
Other committees meeting?
Nothing has been met yet. We're still formalizing all that, and that'll be rolled out and actually be a part of it as we move forward. But right now, you'll know everything at the April board meeting.
Let me come back to Mrs. Eldren Fritz's question as it relates to ADMs. And to provide a historical perspective, what happened was the Pennsylvania Department of Education came out last year and said that essentially, when a student is taking a college and high school class, that we would now have to begin, they said it was always that was supposed to be that way, based upon their interpretation of the legislation. What had happened was they notified school districts that when students were taking college and high school, even though our teachers were teaching it, that we were not able to receive reimbursement for the average of the ADM. Of course, at that point, we totally disagree with that in that unless we are paying for the full cost of the college course. Totally disagree with that, seeing that the local taxpayer is spending the money to pay that teacher. So the actual loss of funding never really happened. John can probably answer, I'm asking him off the top of his head, what that impact would have been for Franklin region. Now, we're talking, at this point, I know, like, this year, I think we have 1,400 classes being taken by Franklin Regional students. Some kids take multiple classes. So that would have been 1,400 courses where we could not have received that ADM. And I'm guessing, John, I don't.
It's impossible to know without knowing what every district in the state called ADM after the fall. It's just sort of a big, and it's a bad share. I think it's good to be able to know that.
Okay. But that legislation in terms of the ADM had every district had to pay for that? Or lost that level of funding? It would have been a loss. It would have been significant.
Yeah, I mean, it's totally important. The state did not increase the funding, it's just how the piece of pie is divided. The pie is divided among all the districts. So if the pie has remained the same, we could assume that, yeah, if more students participate in the dual enrollment program, then other districts would increase it, but I can't pick the number at the moment. It's just that, you know, it's accurately reflecting the students that were educated. You know, that is certain.
Right. So.
So we're sustaining, not gaining, basically is the summary?
Correct.
All right, so that concludes the public comments. Solicitor comments this evening?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. We will move on to consent agenda items. We'll start with consent agenda item number one, Mr. Folvio, the elementary science resource approval.
Yes, this item was on 30-day review. It is called Mystery Science, and it will be, if approved, implemented in the 24-25 school year K to five. And the cost is $14.95 per building, so about $3,000 total for the school year.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Folvio? Okay, we'll move on to number two, managed service provider agreement. Mr. Schreckengoss.
Hello, I have one item on the agenda. That is a contract, three-year contract with Alliance Technology, who is our managed service provider. They've been providing service for us for the last two years. Questions?
Questions for Mr. Schreckengoss.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution, Westmoreland County American 250th School Board Initiative. Dr. Prano.
So essentially, we are looking at the 250th anniversary of Westmoreland County as being of an official county in the United States of America. And so there is Pennsylvania Commission for the United States Semi-Quincentennial American 250PA was established by the legislature and the governor in 2018 to plan, encourage, develop and coordinate the commemoration of the 250th anniversary of the founding of the U.S. I'm sorry, this is Westmoreland County celebration of our 250th year. Pennsylvania's integral role in that event and the impact of its people on the nation's past, present and future. Essentially, what we're doing is a resolution to support their efforts and engage our students and our community in the celebration of our 250th year as a nation.
Any comments or questions for Dr. Prano? All right, we'll move on to consent agenda items four through seven for Mr. Perry. First one, the amendments to the contract for the transportation of school pupils.
Yes, we have two amendments for consideration. The first relates to the provision of transportation monitors provided by the contractor as needed when the district's not able to fulfill that position. And the second relates to the composition of the transportation fleet for the 24-25 school year.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Perry?
So we have these people in place now, or we've had them in the past?
Yes, it's typically in vehicles that require handicap transportation, having a second adult on the vehicle, so that the driver who operates the lift isn't leaving students unsupervised on the vehicle. So we do have a few vehicles that require that.
So financially, is that the same as it traditionally has been, or does it go up?
This is new, an amendment to the contract, have the transportation contractor be able to provide that as well as an option.
Okay, I see. Thank you.
Any additional comments or questions? Next, high school band uniform replacement.
Yes, we're recommending that the board approve the purchase of 200 band uniforms and 50 band front uniforms from DeMoulin Brothers and Company for a total cost of $139,565. The existing band uniforms were purchased in 2010, so I think we can all agree, they've had a good useful life over the last almost 15 years. DeMoulin Brothers was the vendor that we purchased the uniforms from previously. We've been overall satisfied with the quality and how they've held up over a number of Just so you're aware, this purchase would, I would expect to include in the 24-25 budget, just based on when payment would be expected. We can expect about 180-day lead time for the uniforms to be delivered. And one item that the finance committee had discussed previously is the potential to possibly use fund balance to fund this purchase as once every 14 or 15 years is about as close to a one-time frequency as we'll get with things.
The questions on that. So the expectation is we will already have an answer for where the funds will come from then?
I'm sorry?
We already know where the funds will come from for the new uniforms.
Well, that can be part of the discussion is when we work through developing and finalizing the 24-25 budget. But that's typically one option, that use that on assigned fund balance that we have right now.
And that balance is open to cover for that on its own? There's nothing that?
Oh, yes, there's about, I think, $5.7 million in it at the end of the last audit year. Mark Turnley will be here to present the audit report for the year ended June 30th, but off the top of my head, I believe that was the balance on assigned fund balance.
Thank you.
We currently have band parents stitching together the uniforms because they're falling apart.
Yeah, they're bad.
So it's really needed.
On all fronts, yeah. Any other questions? Excellent, we'll move on to budget transfers, Mr. Perry.
This month, we have general fund transfers of $5,798.44. Next, gifts, grants and donations. This month, we have an intermediate school PTO donation of $2,625 for a teacher grant to support a podcasting lab. Three different donations from corporations to support the GOAT Summer Computer Science Program, $500 from IQ Inc., $500 from Alstom and $400 from PPG Industries. And then $2,000 from the United Way of Southwestern Pennsylvania to support kindergarten transition
Any questions for Mr. Perry?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Matzie, next couple items, we'll start with the 2024-2025 capital plan.
Good evening. In your packet, everybody has a copy of our capital plan. In asking for the board's approval for 24-25 capital plan, if there's any questions on any of that.
Any questions for Mr. Matzie? Okay, we'll move on to biomedical waste disposal service agreement.
The biomedical, excuse me, the biomedical waste company we had went out of business. So we went on a search for a new company. This company is actually cheaper and it's on demand, so it's not a fee that we have to pay. It's only when we call them and they come up and pick up.
Okay. Any questions on that? Next up, Heritage Elementary Demolition Change Order for the additional window abatement?
Yes, there's a change order for, change order GC-1 for Rittmeyer and Sons Construction to take out these glass block windows that were found to have asbestos around them that were unforeseen. They were hidden in the walls. They couldn't, there was no way to know they were there until they started taking down things on the inside of the walls. Went back to a yearbook from 1955 to see these glass block windows were there. When they did the renovation last, before they put the stucco on, they just framed around those and just left them intact. So it is an unforeseen part of the project that will need to be removed.
Any questions for Mr. Matzie on the abatement change order? Next, the grandstand seating.
Grandstand seating, we have a price from a company that is a co-star company to get some new seating for some seating that has been damaged. This will give us full capacity back in the stadium.
Any questions on the seating?
Mr. Matzie, is the seating reinforced?
We were going to, we're going to do things to reinforce it.
Okay.
Because it is in the student section.
All right, any questions for Mr. Matzie? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Delp, next couple agenda items, starting with the summer 2024 Artificial Intelligence Program by the Stanford graduates.
Yes, good evening, everyone. The first item we bring to you is an opportunity for our students in grades eight through 11 to elect into participating into an artificial intelligence workshop that would be provided by Stanford and MIT professionals and graduate students in various areas of artificial intelligence. In your packets, you'll see what would be the introductory letter that would be sent out with your approval to our community, including the survey of information that they would collect as an application process, as well as a breakdown of the professionals and the programs that they would be offering our students. It would be 28 hours, it would occur during the month of July, two and a half hours a day, and Monday through Thursday.
Any questions?
Yes.
I was going to say, just when would, if this were approved, when would parents, when would be the plan to introduce that to parents, or they should be looking for that information?
It would be immediately after your approval. We would look to begin our communications plan so that folks would be able to have an opportunity to coordinate this opportunity with vacation plans and anything else that might be occurring over the summer.
Thank you. Before I get into the meat of what I want to say, I want to say initially, I think that having an opportunity for programming for the students is great. I think any opportunity to learn about modern technology, how things are changing is a good concept. With that said, I do have some concerns based on the documentation that was provided as part of the packet. So the third paragraph on the Artificial Intelligence Program letter says, "Students will learn to program AI using Python, discuss ethics and bias within AI." I take consequence of that. I agree, there should be a deep discussion on that. I'm just not sure that the folks at Stanford, MIT, especially graduate students, should be the ones giving that discussion. So I think, from my understanding at least, progressive ideologies have implemented or infiltrated a lot of the Ivy League schools, Stanford, MIT among them. If we would ignore that for a moment, I think there's inherent bias in that type of discussion. I'd rather be focused on more education, this is how you program in Python, this is how you program AI, this is how AI functions. Let's not get in the discussion of ethics and bias. And further along those lines, the brochure itself speaks about two students' experience at this program. And one young lady says that, "I enjoy dwelling on ethical questions and learning about applications of AI directly from people working to create them. I benefited from the insightful conversations I have with our instructors who also helped me post in spirit AI, including the college application process." Again, is it insightful because we're learning about technology, or is it insightful because we're teaching these kids about something else to do with ethics or what's right and wrong? How should this AI be biased? Which I thought was even more telling from the second young lady. Let me find this sentence, one moment, please. "As an AI scholar this year, I collaborated on an AI project that focused on social justice and engaged fellow students and instructors who have a passion for AI." Again, I think social justice, again, can be determined, means a lot of things, but I don't think we should be having that type of conversation in an educational, it should be focused purely on AI, how does it work and how do you program it? And the final point, which I think reinforces it, I'm not just wearing a tinfoil hat at the moment, which maybe I am free to say that, on the questionnaire that we're going to be sending out to these parents, the kids to answer, on page three, "Which of these domains would you especially interested in learning on how to apply AI to?" You can choose up to two. Healthcare and biology, e.g. detecting skin cancer. Natural sciences, e.g. searching for exoplanets. Mobility, object detection for self-driving cars. Arts and music, developing music recommender systems. Ethics and social sciences, e.g. detecting bias in the criminal justice system. I think there's, and there's two other options generally, it's not important for the moment. My point here, I'm cool with, for me personally, if Stanford, MIT want to come in and teach our students, or anyone else in the community who's interested in learning about this, I think that's great. But cut this other stuff out. To me, I see this as an opportunity for them to preach and to give some of their opinion on things that they don't have any right to do so with our students.
And I second that.
That's my comment, Dr. Delp, thank you.
Not that it's emotion, just my opinion.
Yes, I kind of view it in two different ways. There is that application of it. There's also the application of it whenever you are developing it, to understand how these models work. Large language models are generally how close together words are within a certain space. To understand how that affects the output is important, whether it's some, an output that you like, an output that you don't like, ultimately looking for the facts. And understanding how those inputs and, I'll say, upvotes, downvotes work to get that output is important. So I think understanding those biases, ISEs, is important. I don't have an issue with learning that, how the machine actually does that piece, if they are going to teach. If they're going to go beyond the coding piece of it, yeah, there is an issue that you shouldn't be instilling values in the people. But understanding how the bias could come out of the machine, I think is important.
I'd like to add something to that. I think it'd be important to look at that ahead of time. What is included in the bias? Is it going to be both sides? Is it very progressive? Is it futuristic? That would be okay if it's futuristic, but if it's just one point of view that the college is trying to put on our kids, I think I'd want to look at that ahead of time.
And they've been very receptive to us being able to work with them and communicate with them. So one of the things I could ask them for is their specific curriculum and a more detailed itemized list of what they would cover in that particular area.
That'd be great.
Thank you. Just because AI says something doesn't mean it's true. I mean, my wife works in education and they are using AI and they're looking at the output of it to validate it or correct it. It's not, it's not smart. It only knows what you put in and how much people upvote or downvote and how close words are together. That's.
Right, and that's, and I'm okay with that. If you want to talk about the risks of implications of AI and what that can mean for the future for people taking that as truths, I think it's been demonstrated already by both ChatGPT and by Google's AI engine. and by Google's AI engine, the failures and faults that have come out as output as a result of people's biases that were input into that. So if they wanna talk about those types of issues, I'm okay with that, but they shouldn't be preaching on what is right to our students or to those who attend.
So I kind of, as we move on to the voting meeting, is there more of a consensus that if Dr. Delp is willing and able to get more information, maybe we, when we get to the voting meeting, consider table for next month, have some more information about it and that won't inhibit us from, if the board agrees that it's good curriculum that we support, that would not inhibit it from occurring this year? Am I correct on that?
No, it will not, just shorten the timeline for the application process. That's all. But it's, certainly, this is an elective process as well, with the parents $1,500 paying to elect into participating in this as well.
Any other questions or comments on that before we move on? All right, we'll go to policy reviews.
The next item this evening is looking to seek approval for the first read of Policy 903, Public Comment in Board Meetings.
Any comments or questions?
So what is changing here? Where's this brand? In addition?
The most significant change is, would be the fact that you wouldn't have to list your address. You would simply have to state your municipality and that your municipality falls within the Franklin Regional School District. Everything else remains the same. They changed from public participation to public comment.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, policy review, second read.
Yes, we're seeking approval of a second reading for Policy 815, Our Acceptable Use of Internet Computers and Network Resources, and Policy 819, Suicide Awareness, Prevention and Response.
Any questions with either of those two policies? All right, and then the student agreement approval.
Yep, the next item is seeking approval for the student agreement as written.
Any questions with that?
Where do we locate the student agreement?
It's on page 76.
Right, given that it's not public, it's not in the public section because it relates to a student placement. So, but we can certainly let you take a look at that student agreement. We discussed that in executive session earlier about placement. Any other questions or comments? All right, and personal agenda.
And the last item is seeking approval for the attached personnel items to be provisionally approved upon, contingent upon the submission of appropriate documentation such as that listed, clearances, physical TV desk, et cetera, and all other items as required by PA school law.
Any questions on the personal agenda items? All right, that concludes our consent agenda items for this evening. I need a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting. Motion. First, Mr. Zebraq.
Second.
Second, Mr. Rosalina. Move over now to our. We move over now to our regular, regular meeting. So I call to order the Franklin Regional School District's regular meeting for Monday, March 25th, 2024. We will now stand to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic from which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reading of the mission statement, "We, the Franklin Regional School community strive for excellence, learning, achievement, and citizenship in all we do." Ms. Wolf, I will turn to you for a roll call.
Mr. Rosalina?
Here.
Mrs. Buccheri?
Here.
Mr. Fallett?
Here.
Mr. Kizlosky?
Here.
Mr. Weinman?
Here.
Mr. Zebraq?
Present.
Mr. Crimsky?
Here.
Dr. Eshelman, Ramey, and Mr. Yungayar Alson.
So I need approvals of the minutes for the committee of the whole meeting for February 12th, 2024, and the regular meeting minutes from February 12th, 2024. Need a motion to approve. Mr. Fallett?
Second.
Mr. Rosalina? Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries seven zero. Now I'll turn it over to Dr. Perino for future dates and upcoming topics.
So reports and information, future dates include April 3rd, we will have a curriculum committee meeting at 6:00 PM in the administrative offices. On April 8th, we will have a committee of the whole meeting and regular board meeting, 7:30 here in the Murray'sville Municipal Building. Upcoming topics include policy, second read, gifts, grants, donations, budget transfers, and personnel, also the much anticipated update for MindUp. And that concludes future dates and upcoming topics.
All right, we will move over to the list of bills for March 2024. Paid bills in the general fund of $659,959.18. Athletic fund of $2,573.67 for a total paid bills of $662,532.85. Unpaid bills, general fund, $891,109.42. Capital reserve fund of $120,949.38. Athletic fund of $27,820 for a total unpaid bills of $1,039,878.80. For a grand total of $1,702,411.65. Food services of $166,903.45. Grand total, including food services, of $1,869,315.10. I need a motion to approve the March 2024 list of bills.
So, yeah.
Vince first, John second. Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Bills, nine, seven zero. I need a motion to approve the Treasury report for February 2024.
So moved.
Scott, second.
Second.
Mark. Comments, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We will now move on to public comments for the meeting. We have Diana Altiri Hand.
Hi, Diana Altiri Hand, 2651 Chambers Park Court. So I still wanted to bring up a couple more things about the Learning 2025 Initiative. First of, sorry, you good? Okay. I just wanted to point out that the Grable Foundation and the Goldie Hawn MindUp curriculum are both an integral part of this initiative. And AI is one of the things that they're pushing through this, that AI is going to be such a thing of the future. There was a educational video on the web that they were presenting to districts looking to implement this, and they were discussing how, why would you want to spend your time educating a child to spell something when you're just gonna say, "Hey, Google, how do you spell?" Or, "Hey, what's 10 plus plus 20?" And it's gonna give you the answer. So why waste your stuff on that? Because AI is just gonna tell you it. And again, as you said, Scott, we know AI is wrong on a lot of things. Those ones they might be able to answer, but I don't know. So, you know, what is going to be our drive towards this IA stuff? Are we going to be using that instead of our regular curriculum? Is our curriculum changing? Where's the transparency? Where is a, is there a curriculum on this? Is there a process of changing to this curriculum? There's just really not a whole lot of information out there, and I don't know that the parents and community really understand what this is because I've been investigating it for over a week and I get more confused with everything I look at. So, thank you.
Just in response to the AI comment, AI is being worked on, and automation has been occurring for decades, which AI is going to be part of automation in the future. But understanding how it works, which is what Dr. Delp is trying to offer, is very important. Like I said, you need to understand the inputs and the outputs, and then what happens as you're pushing it through that machine. I work at a university. We have high-performance computing systems. I help stand those up for researchers that are doing things that I can't comprehend. So that is the future, and we need our kids to learn and understand how these machines work and then to make sure that there aren't those biases in them, that we are talking, Josh and I have talked about facts, making sure it's factual, not left, not right, what's the facts? Thank you.
All right, so moving on to items that need or want to be removed from the consent agenda for separate action by members of the board.
Request item 12.
All right, Josh pulled number 12. Any others? Okay. So we're gonna, I need a consent agenda motion to approve consent agenda items one through 11 and 13 through 16.
So moved.
Mark?
Second.
Second, Josh. Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Those consent agenda items passed seven zero. Josh, do you wanna elaborate on number 12 since she pulled?
As we spoke about in the previous meeting, I'd like to talk about or get more clarification or perhaps revise the agenda or the limit and bounds of what the program is allowed to cover and offer to the students that select to take this over the summer of 2024. So postpone, I guess, for a month to get that clarified.
With, with the timetable that we have, having a curriculum meeting on April 3rd and then another board meeting on April 8th, would we be able to have the information for the curriculum committee to go through on the 3rd and then thus be able to then present the rest of the, for the full board on the 8th to approve or not approve based on the items presented?
I would be forecasting, but I would anticipate that they would be able to provide that information based upon their in-depth response time and how quickly they have worked with us regarding any information. So I will, I will certainly be communicating with them, and I would inform the curriculum committee on April 3rd whether or not we were able to get the information that we need to be able to take forth for the school board meeting on the 8th.
So I'll just ask the solicitor, since we're looking at, Dr. Delp's looking at just presenting it to the curriculum committee, instead of tabling the motion, should we pull this item off of, just pull the item from the agenda for no vote at this point in time? What would be the preferred way to go?
I think because it's on the agenda, we'll have to table it at least till the April meeting.
And it can still move through our committees and come back that way then. Okay.
Yeah, I just wanna talk real quick about the ethical use of AI. There are some things I don't want, I obviously wouldn't want them to learn about. However, there are sides to AI that are issues across our nation, and we can say that what we wanna say. I see AI not necessarily as a curriculum, but as a tool, and it's how to use that tool ethically. There are people that are writing papers and books and speeches and on and on and on and on, and putting it off as their own work. And there are ethical ways where you can use AI to, as a resource to do those things in a way that's appropriate, and there is an unethical way where you're essentially engaging in plagiarism and those types of things, as well as, I don't know what the other considerations are, like Scott, sometimes I can't even figure all of it out. We're looking at ChatGPT and Google, those analytics, and it is, we're in the very infancy of AI, and to be honest with you, as a parent, it scares the hell out of me. Because our kids better be able to go out and use it, but they better be able to go out and use it ethically, and if they're not using it ethically in a way that moves things forward in a positive manner, then they're using it negatively that has that negative impact and goes the opposite in terms of where we want them to go as citizens. And so I just wanna be very careful as we, as we, as we look at this because, you know, that, and I think Mrs. Buccheri said it best, if we're going to present an argument, we present both sides or multiple aspects of that argument. And I also think the kids enrolled in that, in that course also, you know, the age level matters and the fact that it's opt-in, not opt-out, they're opting in in terms of their participation so they know what, what they're signing up for.
May I want to reply or comment or? So I agree with you, it is an opt-in opportunity, but I would want it to be an opt-in opportunity to learn something about AI as far as for functions, how to program it, not, like for me, as I said, I am very pro, hey, let's teach our students everything that we possibly can to better prepare them for the future, and I think that this falls in that, that line. I wouldn't want a parent to say, "Well, I want my child to learn about how to program in Python, how to program AI," but I don't agree with social, a social project or, like, I agree with you, there is, there should be a discussion of ethics and bias. Again, I'm just not confident that the students, grad students from MIT and Stanford who are gonna be educated or appropriate to make those determinations and discussions because those same folks in those Ivy League schools are the ones getting hired by the Googles and by the ChatGPTs and they're doing the AI programming and their, the output of their effort is demonstrating that they are biased in what they're putting there and they're not sticking to the facts. And that, that's really what my concern lies.
Well, what's interesting, whenever, what happened with Google is Google went, "We don't understand how this is working," and then had to go back and correct whatever it is they think was throwing off their results. And their company lost $100 billion in market share or in market capitalization after that happened. So the market corrects itself and the product will correct itself. Whenever, but you need to be able to recognize those biases, whether it is left or right in, in, in these tools, because they are just that, they're tools. They're there to help make things more efficient. So that we can focus on hopefully other things that are more important than figuring out what 10 plus 10 is, whenever we can just cite that as a fact.
So I was just gonna say, I think Diana was asking, do we have any plans or what stages are we at Franklin about using AI? Or is this just maybe the beginning? Like, what is our philosophy on that at this point? I know it's very.
Our kids, kids use AI every day. And so, like it or not, it's just, it's part of the world in which, which they live. We're like everyone else. We're trying, we're trying to figure out how, how you deal with that, right? I'm gonna sit here and tell you I have all the answers in terms of what AI looks like in the classroom in five years or 10 years. Here's what I'm gonna tell you. I know for a fact that it's going to be, it's a factor now, and I know that it's going to continue to grow in its use and utilization by our students. But earlier tonight, and so we talked about AI in terms of ChatGPT. Tonight, we talked about, earlier tonight, artificial intelligence, about assessments. Tonight, we talked about, earlier tonight, artificial intelligence, about assessments that are built by humans that make decisions based upon student answers, whether to make the next question more difficult or to go back. That's artificial intelligence. Every time I use my, my GPS, which sometimes I think I wouldn't be able to get anywhere if I didn't have that. But the reality is every time I use my GPS, that's AI at work. Every time, I mean, people, people are getting smart refrigerators and smart televisions and AI is at work in everything we do. And it's part of that internet of things where your, you know, your Amazon account is predicting what, what you want to buy and what you might buy next. It's all part of that artificial intelligence, and it's going to be part of our life.
I've spent the last couple of weeks at where I work trying to develop an acceptable use policy for AI, for a tool that, there are so many different versions of AI. You've got ChatGPT, then there's ChatGPT Teams, there's ChatGPT Enterprise, and it's all different ways and different places where your data can go and different ways for you to control that data. And understanding those environments is, is really important to, to your point about understanding the outputs that you get. So is it a controlled environment or isn't it a controlled environment? Where it's learning your actual business processes, that's a controlled environment where you're not getting outside information outside of your business? Or is it the, the free version of ChatGPT where everybody just dumps everything into it? And it's kind of like, I mean, we all grew up and got Google all of a sudden because we all used to go to a shelf and pull a dictionary off the shelf, and then we could Google, now we can Google things and look up the same stuff. It's just the evolution of them.
From what I'm hearing is, I don't believe there's a lot of differing opinion on whether we think it's a valuable tool, and there's just some, there's some question about just hashing out some of the details as to what specifically certain parts are. I think we're of a very closed mindset, you know, as we discuss it here, hearing everybody talk about just what we're looking for in it. So if you want, I'll, I'll make a motion to table it till our next meeting. You can bring more details to the curriculum meeting, and then we'll bring it back just to look at the specificity of those details, but I don't hear a lot of varying diametrically opposed opinions on it or the, the lack of value of, of having those things, just some details that people want to hear. So I'll put, put that motion, present that motion to table it to a next meeting.
We have a motion to table to April 9th, any a second motion?
A second.
John, this is second. This solicitor, do we need to do a roll call vote on this since we table it next, or can we just do a regular vote?
You can do a regular vote, but if somebody says, if somebody votes in the negative, we'll have to do a roll call.
Okay. So I'm going to make the motion to, the motion now is actually, since we've already first and seconded, to move it to the April 9th meeting, or April 8th, I'm sorry, April 8th meeting, the eclipse got me all warmed up, I'm sorry. The April 8th meeting and get further information. And so that's what we're voting on now. So all in favor of moving it to the April 8th meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to move it or table to the April 8th meeting, seven zero. With that, I need a motion to adjourn the regular meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Mark, Josh, second.
Good evening.
Or good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.